All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. First off, I'd like to say welcome to the meeting of the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, August 6th, 2013. Tonight is a special action meeting followed by a regular work session. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware they're being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphones, state their name and address, and sign the audience of citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their comments and questions. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker, and that's in reference to Board Policy 8340. Good evening. Let's start off with a pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Sullivan.
I will pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As this is a special action meeting, I'd like to call to the audience, anybody wishing to speak to the board, feel free to step forward, state your name and address, and sign the audience of citizens logbook. Mr. Patchell.
Yes. Good evening. My name is William Patchell. Good evening, and thanks to the members of the board who served the district, helping it to achieve the highest standards of academic and professional standards. We in the district owe each of you our deepest gratitude. We are now about to begin another sports season, and want to focus in on our varsity football team. As you know, we suffered 62 concussions last year. I was able to meet with Dan Ryan and Dick Bartle about my concerns. 62 concussions is not acceptable. I see already the public is being prepared for another season in the NFL and college. They show short clips of players flying like ragdolls and being pounded into the field. As I came here tonight, I see pint-sized children wearing helmets, and I guess hoping to be like the pros. Firstly, contact in this sport should only be seen during the games. We had players actually injured during practice. August 12th starts our varsity practice. As I remind you, the Safety in Youth Sports Act states, "appropriate medical professional." It says practices, inner-school practices, scrimmages for all activities listed in the paragraphs, but I'm just keeping my comments to the football because we suffered the greatest number of concussions in that sport. This means appropriate medical personnel on-site. I have the record of all those that will be watching over the varsity team, that they did take the familiarization course that is offered and required, and that they had completed all the courses. I hope there will be a 50 percent reduction in concussions during the games and zero concussions during practices. No one needs to have contact during a practice. I might add that to regain player status, I asked Dan Ryan, "What are these people here? Did they come back?" "Oh, no. It was too late in the season, and they weren't able to come back." So I didn't know how that turned out, but I was pretty shocked. At the end of this season, I plan to get a report on the results of how we've done, both of the injuries and the concussions. I know well that we all have the best interest of safety for the players, so that when they do go on to college, they won't already be burned out, having suffered multiple concussions. They go from one sport to another sport. "Oh, you had a concussion in basketball, too?" That's unacceptable, and I believe that North Penn School District should be in the forefront of the Commonwealth to say, "You know what? We only had five last year, and we used to have many, many more." That would be true success. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Anyone else tonight? All right, let's move forward with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so it's clear to the audience and those viewing at home, we did have 62 concussions in the district, not all those in football, though, so it's clear. I'm sure it was clear with the way Mr. Patchell was explaining his concern, but thank you for your concern. It is a matter of great concern to all school districts. Okay, regarding tonight's agenda, there are two items. The first is personnel, and I'd like to introduce two individuals that are on tonight's agenda. With us this evening in the audience, we do have William Bowen. He is the recommended candidate for Gwinnett Square Principal. If Mr. Bowen could stand, thank you. And also, we have Peter Nicholson. Mr. Nicholson is the recommended candidate for the Assistant Principal position at North Penn High School. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for attending this evening. I'm sure they'll be available after the meeting for board members to do some introductions and chat a bit, so thank you again for attending. So with that, I do recommend the approval of personnel items as listed, items BA2, A through Q.
Motion. Second. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? Call those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And item B...
Congratulations, gentlemen.
I recommend approval of contracts per item BA3, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
Second. Question by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All these contracts were BIU, right?
Yeah, they are MCIU.
I have a motion of second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The public should be aware that the board met an executive session tonight, August 6th, 2013, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. to discuss matters of personnel, potential litigation. Adjourn the meeting and roll into our work session. All those in favor, adjournment?
Aye.
All right, we're rolling right into our work session. Bob, do you have to do anything with the taping?
There will be a power point, so some of you may want to move your seats a little bit.
Bob, are you okay to roll?
As we have been working to balance budgets in recent years with the recession, a number of times, comments have been made that we should look for opportunities to invest where there may be long-term financial benefits. So that's the origin of the discussion this evening. Okay. If I can advance it. Let's see. So we call this proposal a investment and productivity fund, and the question is, why is productivity important since our staff is over 75 percent of the entire budget? When we look into the future using very simple numbers, if the Act One Index is slightly higher than it's been in recent years at 2 percent, that generates a little over $3 million. If we have a strong economic rebound, that's probably worth $1 million a year. Our compensation increases, assuming healthcare remains at the national trend of 10 percent, will require about $2.4 million in new money every year, and the retirement rate spike as the retirement system is underfunded due to investment losses during the recession will require $2.9 million. So when you add up the new revenues at about $4 million and the new expenditures at $5.3 million, we really cannot expect much relief, and we are going to have to look for every opportunity to increase our productivity. Now, just showing that same thing graphically, I think, is fairly valuable. The new revenue shows up here as about $3 million in new taxes. This is economic recovery, a couple of years at $1 million, maybe it slows down after that. But our retirement will require this amount of money, which is not too much different than the new money coming in, about $4 million in revenue. This is at about $3 million. Healthcare is, again, at $2.4 million and continues on out. The retirement, we finally get some relief four or five years out. But the point of this is, we really are going to struggle to find the money, particularly after we've exhausted all other options in recent years to balance the budget. So we're going to struggle in just the compensation aspect. Looking at it slightly differently, let's take a support staff person earning $20 an hour, working full year, salaries, retirement, healthcare, and currently, even if we're giving them a 3 percent raise, which historically has been a pretty reasonable number to consider, the other compensation increases, though, when you add total compensation of all three items, are going up 6 percent, 5 percent, and so forth. And the amount of the benefits as a percentage of salaries is going from 40 percent to 62 percent. Now, any of you can make different assumptions here, but what we're seeing is a trend that is going to force us into making every way we can to have the workforce more productive. That's support staff. If you look at the same thing for teachers, it's not much different. The compensation increase would be, you know, 4.5 to 5.8 percent. Slight difference in how much the benefits are of the total compensation package, but they are certainly increasing in both regards. So as I think about that and what we've been through in recent years, what's clear is that the financial challenges are going to continue until the rate spike plateaus at a number of about 30 percent of salary equally shared by the state and the district, and that doesn't occur for seven or eight years. Healthcare costs have been going up well above the inflation which sets the Act One Index in most organizations. Some have been able to keep it more toward inflation with very aggressive cost control. So those two challenges, I believe, are going to continue. Our budget balancing efforts, both revenue increases, expenditure reductions, have been many one-time efforts. The unfilled vacancy strategy has been a very big component of it, the largest component over 150 vacancies of 2,000 employees that we had several years ago. And at this point, looking at the numbers previously, it's unlikely, in my opinion, that we're going to be able to find the money to refill many of those. And of course, some departments have been affected a little more than others by this strategy. So as I see it, the decisions will become more difficult, and that makes them subject to more scrutiny by our own staff, wondering about any decisions we make, and of course the general public. And any tax increase is going to require proof that we're performing very cost-effectively and very productively across the board. So with that financial picture, and you can all bring your own thoughts to what it looks like going out there, but you have to make some assumptions on the numbers. So what we're talking about is a fund that would take money that we currently have, a relatively small amount, as you'll see, and stimulate some proposals where an investment now will help us in the future. Now, we want to do that with a rigorous decision-making method that withstands all this scrutiny that I expect. So we're talking about performance standards for any of these things, timelines, accountability measures, and reporting to the public and the school board. As we have talked with people about this, we see that maybe we should have some separate accounting of this, so that we're proving that in individual projects and in the fund in total, this is working for us. So what we did was, just to test how this might work, we brought several proposals forward. We had a couple of school board members who've spoken about this from the finance committee. We had some community members, appropriate administration, Kurt and I, Christine Lebraski of the Community Engagement Office was there to look at some proposals about a month ago. And what happens is, the proposals were presented individually with a several-page document each, and the idea here is that the committee would help refine the proposals and get them ready for further consideration by the board, or they would say, "Well, this is not an idea that we support." Now, of course, once it would be approved at that review level, it would have to come to the board for the normal approval, whatever required, whether it's a purchasing decision, an employment contract with a provider, or whatever. So let's talk about the test we did a month ago. We had three items that we brought forward. One was a contracted grant-writing service with a local individual, experienced and successful in grant-writing, well-connected, worked with many of our people in the district over the years. We looked at that proposal. It would be on an hourly-rate basis. We'll talk about each of these in more detail. Secondly, is something we focused on several years ago in Innovation Celebration 2. It's applying a concept used in big, successful businesses like General Electric, Lean Six Sigma. We've used it here around copying and printing with the help of Xerox. The amount we're talking about there is about a $6,000 amount. We're also going to look tonight at some financial and personnel benchmarking software that looks at comparing about 1,000 different variables with other high-performing districts in the country, again, a relatively small amount of 6,500. So this is just showing you the kind of proposals that may come forward. So let's look at these in more detail. The first one was grant-writing. Now, of course, there are many grant programs from public and private sources. The district has had success in both some relatively small grants from local foundations to the very large multimillion-dollar grants that we're operating with now, the KTO grant. Generally, good grant writers bring back 10 times more than you pay them, and the experience that appears successful in many big school districts is that the grant writer is really there to pull ideas out of the staff, let them know what the opportunities are, and help them write their ideas into the application, file the application, and so forth, and take that burden off the staff, who's probably capable of doing it but not as experienced and really doesn't have the time. And of course, we all need to be aware that when you do grants, it raises a number of other issues that need to be considered in terms of whether the organization has the capacity to apply and comply with the grant requirements. So the process that we envision, and I guess Diane Holben, who's got, Dr. Holben, great experience up in Allentown, agrees pretty much with this process. This is what I saw used successfully in Lancaster when I was there. The administration and board would set general funding objectives. Let's say it's early childhood literacy programs, energy efficiency, whatever. Then the grant writer would go out and look for the online and printed materials regarding this, develop relationship with funding agencies, with foundations, and so forth. The senior administration team would review the opportunities and say, "We want to do this one, but not that." And they would also appoint some kind of an expert focus group from our staff to help develop the ideas. There would be a brief meeting with the grant writer with that focus group of experts. The grant writer would come back with a draft. The focus group would refine and review that draft. The grant writer would submit it per the deadline, per all the requirements, and then you wait to see if you have it. If you receive it, then there are various implementation items that may have to occur, including appointing a manager. So that's pretty much the process. So this person would be here working deep within the organization with our staff to try to find them money to fund the projects they would like to have. Now, let's just take a look at the kind of things that might be out there, and this is the full range meant to kind of show you. Penn State Hershey has worked with some of our schools around student wellness and nutrition. They provide a number of mini-grants. So these aren't numbers that will balance the budget, but they are ideas that will help us in other areas. Safe Roots to Schools. When I came here, I was very impressed that the school district, working with North Wales, had received a $1.2 million grant. The implementation's now in progress. I believe that's the largest state grant, largest grant in the state around trying to have a walkable school community, and there are more grants out there to plan these sorts of things. And that has the potential of making our walks to school safer, not requiring as much busing, we would hope. The U.S. Department of Agriculture has nutrition training and technical grants aimed at helping districts comply with the new dietary guidelines, and these have proven to cause some financial issues for food service departments in schools, as some of these dietary guidelines are not as popular to the students. So that could be helpful in one of our areas of financial challenge. The 21st Century Community Learning Centers, I just pulled the list of grants. There are several districts in Montgomery County that receive them. Agencies in Bucks County receive them. So this is to be a center for both the school and the community, almost $20 million statewide. There are some other grants that, you know, we may or may not, depending on the characteristics, be eligible for. When you go more to the foundation side or businesses that we might go to that fund some relevant projects, you have a full range. ExxonMobil does a lot with education, various programs, various sized districts. The Bank of America, National Energy Foundation, we're looking to improve our student engagement component of that program, which has been helpful to us. Small grants might be helpful for that. Pennsylvania Power and Light, one of our utility companies. We would look to build on the Energy Star success and go to companies that are also Energy Star Partner of the Year recipients, and these are across the board, Lowe's, Home Depot, Merck, others that, you know, find that to be an interesting thing and useful for their company. They may be willing to help us on that U.S. Green Building Council, both in terms of the building-related things as well as the curriculum and possibly extracurricular programs that could be developed around that, and others. So we just took a look at a few things that are out there to give you some idea. Now, we talked about accountability. So first of all, we said that this grant writer would meet with senior administration. That would be at least several of us. I envision that to be bi-weekly, bringing the range of opportunities forward that met the guidelines we gave them. I would envision monthly reports to the finance committee to say, "What are the funding sources that have been identified? How many meetings have you had with our staff and others? Have you written any grants? What have we received?" We anticipated a one-year trial basis to give it an honest shot, but, you know, if we find that this is not working, we could certainly terminate it earlier. So that's what we had in mind around grant-writing accountability. The group that reviewed it felt it was pretty exciting. We have a number of our administrative staff that are excited about it. So that's one that we would like to move forward on. The next one is Lean Six Sigma. As I said, major corporations have used this. It's very detailed cost and process analysis-oriented. Xerox experts worked with us around our district copying and printing, helped us greatly reduce the cost by a few hundred thousand a year with that work. The person who teaches this for the Philadelphia chapter of the American Society for Quality is a district advocate. We've known him, the people in the district, for many years, and he actually presented this at the Innovation Celebration, and a number of board members spoke with him at that time. Now, what we're proposing here is that we would work with some other districts and train, in our case, five or six individuals, in the other district's case, maybe two or three. We would focus on a very specific topic of transportation, so that we would immediately be applying the lessons learned at the eight sessions that would be conducted over the period of several months. Then, upon the training success here, it could be expanded to other functions. I'll give you my personal experience here. I can't talk about it too much because I was an examiner for the state quality program, went to an organization of this size or slightly larger that had 300 individuals trained, and the number of projects they were using was incredible. They went from very low performance on these issues to very high performance quickly, and then sustained that. Very, very impressive. Again, the cost of this would be relatively low, $1,200 per individual. Our transportation management company would pay for two of their people, so we're talking about three or four people, you know, so this is a $5,000, $6,000 item for us. The eight-day-long sessions, project-oriented, and then the report out at the end of this is to the administrations or boards regarding the findings, recommendations, the cost savings potential. He's never done a project that hasn't paid for itself many times over in his training. That's Lean Six Sigma, again, low cost, I think helpful. This is one that, again, relatively small cost figure, 6,500 per year. It's called In-Lite Software. I'm going to show you a PowerPoint presentation briefly, but it was developed by the former Chief Financial Officer at Tilio Public Schools, and 10 years ago, I bought a very impressive book he had written on performance management and cost control in schools, and since then, he's been working to develop this online system to compare these thousand data elements of staffing levels and financial indicators. So what I believe this would do for us is be very helpful in terms of the more difficult financial decisions. So I'm going to very quickly shift to a PowerPoint before I, of his, that... Okay, a number of us saw this back in October, and I'll quickly run you through this to get a sense of the sophistication. And as I said, he really wrote the book 10 years ago on this. So he looked at our website and said, "What are the characteristics of our strategic plan and our core values that would be helpful? How do they relate to what he is trying to work on?" And he picked those items out. A little trouble advancing this here tonight. So what does he, what can it do for us? It is evaluating performance largely outside of instruction. We would compare ourselves with high-performing school districts. He works with about 75 across the country, including in some states like New Mexico, where they're required to do performance budgeting. So he's pretty up to speed on the latest concepts of how districts are balancing budgets in these times. We would be comparing ourselves with peers, pinpointing actions. At this level of detail, 100 data elements, or 1,000 data elements, you can really have More that he believes can happen here. I'll quickly run through this as quick as this, but just some of the terminology of what they're attempting to do. He believes the same thing, that the efficiency demands, the accountability demands are not going away. In business, people have this kind of data, but unfortunately, educational leaders don't have the data they really need at that level of detail. And there is research and case studies indicate that great and rapid improvement is available with this level of data. He calls it a system gap to higher performance. He believes that education should be continuously attempting to learn and drive to excel, and he believes that software can help do this, and he's got examples from other districts. So here are their corporate beliefs, and as I said, he is an experienced educator, chief financial officer, chief operating officer in a large urban district. So basically, you're developing what's called a performance management system, looking in a balanced way around the organization and looking to have peer comparisons. He's built this on a number of concepts that have been important to him, continuous improvement, going back to some of the leaders in quality management, the Baldridge system, Six Sigma Balanced Scorecard. We talked in our administrative retreat about developing a balanced scorecard for the district. So they're really looking across all parts of the organization, giving us this kind of data in dashboard-type presentations. The core discipline first is to increase your objective knowledge about what, how you're spending your money, what's the impact, and so forth. I'll go through this fairly quickly. I'm just showing you that he has developed this with some fairly proven methods, and it's incorporated into the way that the reports are presented. So it's process-oriented, focused on results, looking at all components of the process. No other core discipline is root, cause analysis. No other core discipline is root, cause analysis. The reports look like this, where in the blue chart, you're looking at a three-year history, comparing your district in blue with peers in green, you're looking at staffing levels, financial levels, and so forth. The standard reports coming off the system, there are numerous reports coming out like this, giving you that kind of simple comparisons. Again, across all aspects of the system, tied together. So, I think that's probably enough, except for I want to show you the last slide because it ties into the productivity. As he looks at systems and works with some of the highest performing around the country and states, and he's doing statewide projects with intermediate units and vocational schools, what he's believing is that you're going to find money to pay your good staff raises over the foreseeable future in this area of waste reduction and efficiency improvements. So he's all geared toward that, the data's presented that way, again, a $6,500 investment. Anyway, what we wanted to say at this point, after you've seen this, is we brought three ideas forward, there's no shortage of ideas that could come forward, what we would like to do, if you approve of this concept, is publicize it and start to bring more ideas forward like this. For example, we looked at the robotic cleaning in a large building where robots are programmed to go out and do some cleaning, we've had high vacancies in our support staff, custodial staff, other districts are finding a one-year payback. We are looking at anything that streamlines processes, particularly labor-intensive processes or software that's developed, there are other labor-saving equipment, for example, the district did a beautiful job about 10 years ago, developing a new snow blower that blows the snow off of school buses, which is a legal requirement before they go out on the road, and so, we want to stimulate more ideas like that, invest in them, but particularly just focused on labor productivity, and we believe that's the most important strategy as we look forward. So, with that, I'll open for questions, hopefully you get the concept, but the questions for the board are, do you agree that the concept is worthwhile, do you agree we've got the right approach to it, what level of information do you want reported back to you if you approve the concept?
Yeah, I was lucky enough to sit in on the meeting that Bob had, what was it, June?
Yes, mid-June.
Yeah, it was late June, and we spoke, I'm sorry, the grant writer's name, I forget her name, but she...
Valerie.
Valerie was there, and she's like a very competent professional, so I was pretty excited about that, I thought there was a little output for a big chance on a return on that, and a 10 to 1 ratio was pretty impressive. I think, conceptually, it's a great idea to look at new ways to find money, I mean, we have to. I'm not sure I buy into the 30% increase in efficiency, that's a pretty steep improvement, especially here, with the work that Bob's done over the last couple of years, I don't think we're going to find 30%. What's our support staff budget, 30 million?
At best, all other non-compensation numbers.
Right, yeah, so, that's a $9 million return, basically.
The support staff number in total is larger than that, but when you look at the non-compensation numbers that we have affected, like the energy budget, it would be...
Yeah, and we've already made improvements on the energy, and we're, I mean, so, but even 10% of that would be a nice improvement in the areas that we haven't looked at yet. So, I'm not discounting that, I'm just, I'm for the concept, I think we should develop a process where ideas come forward, get discussed, and sort of like a committee level, an ad hoc committee, blue ribbon panel, if you will, of what, staff, board members, administration...
Community members as well.
Community members as well, and chew it out and see where you go with it, and I think that was a great idea, I think it's a great idea.
My experience with grant writing has always been a compliance issue seems to be the killer for grants. I mean, North Penn's, over, I don't know how many years, I think 10, last, no, maybe seven or eight, we've gotten over $6 million in grants. The implementation process is always the hurdle to grant, it's not just the fact they're going to give you money, it's what you've got to do with it, and you've got to meet their requirements, and the difficulty of measuring the evaluation of that is not the fact that they gave us X dollars and we used X dollars, it's the soft things that go into that, the compliance issues, and all the changes that you really can't add into the measurements, but if they're sustainable, and it keeps the savings coming, then it has a long-term benefit all the time. The investment in the process analysis, and you're right, 5%, anything, 2% is the goal. I mean, you look at this slide, and you know what they're looking for, looking to pay for itself, and I'll take any savings. It's funny you mentioned the snow blower bus thing, because people don't understand, like, there's a compliance issue for us, we had to remove snow from the top of a bus after snow, and that sounds simplistic until you have to send six people up there to climb up there and do it, and then now they, with one piece of equipment that buses can drive under like a car wash and get rid of it, and, you know, that's the kind of stuff people don't get, because the compliance of the school district is so much more than what you see in private industry, so there's a huge amount of savings if we can get to the process and improve it, so, I'm for it, I don't think it's a big investment from us to get it rolling, to see if it works for us. I like the idea that, you know, we're going to monitor it, and it's going to come back regularly to the finance committee each month, and we can, you know, get an update to that at the board level too, and see what's going on. I don't have a problem with that, we have a responsibility to act in the public's best interest, and it's in the public's best interest if we could do something more efficiently to save money, and I don't think you can avoid the seed money issue, I mean, it's going to take some money to make money.
Right.
I made that comment at the graduation during my speech, if you remember that, Suzanne, you've got to invest sometimes to make money, and in this particular case, we have to invest to find better ways to do things and to smart. The innovation celebration has always been a great source of pride for the district, and it's come up with some good ideas, it's paid for itself many times over, so, I don't have a problem with trying this. I'd like to see it extended a little, expanded a little further, when you can, but I get the fact, let's try these first three big areas. Now, I'm assuming you chose these three ideas because you can see the, refine the process, is that why you chose these three?
We just wanted to sort of review a varied set of proposals and see how this review process worked, see what would be the next steps of implementation, and in some cases, it's simply signing a purchase order, in other cases, it's a contract with an individual that would have to be negotiated and so forth, so, every one of them's different. We have not publicized this yet, but, you know, what we would look to do, if there's approval here tonight, is to then go out within the organization, possibly to the broader community, and say, "If you have ideas you think we need, let's bring them forward." We'd be happy to help you refine them, we may say no, but, you know, nevertheless, bring them forward.
Yeah, and I'm not signing on to those ideas, I think they're good, and I would, I probably would sign on to the grant writer right now, but the Six Sigma and Enit, I think they're both really good ideas, but I would like to explore the idea that there might be some redundancy in those two efforts, because both of them are about improving efficiencies and improving quality, so, but, I mean, they're both good ideas, I just don't know if we need both of them, or, I mean, and we may, but I just need...
We did that with energy, and we've gotten multi-year savings, on top of sustainable savings, and then on top of that, yeah, you're right, eventually you run out of ways to improve that don't impact you negatively some other way.
Yeah, and maybe, I mean, like Bob said, the cost is relatively inexpensive compared to the potential for savings in both of those applications or instruments, so...
Well, but I want to make sure we're clear, the three ideas that he's bringing forward are just part of the investment in the productivity fund, that's what you're really looking for.
Correct, yeah, these are just three examples of the types of things you might see. I would like to see more development of labor-saving equipment, you know, the snow blower's a good idea, the robotic cleaning has proven itself elsewhere, we've seen that in other districts, but I'm sure there's all kinds of things, there, the whole investment in technology around electronic workflow, electronic document management, we believe there's tremendous potential there. Other districts have done a great job of refining every process through detailed documentation, and then looking for opportunities for improvement. Now, that's a project that might need a facilitator to facilitate that district-wide, but, you know, when I was in Lancaster, we did that, and then we had 15 manuals, procedure manuals, 500 flowchart procedures, and we started selling those, we capitalized on the intellectual property of that and numerous other things in the Lancaster case, and so that one, we were selling these manuals that were very helpful to us for 5,000 a set all over the country. So, it's hard to say where this might go, for instance, if we were in Lancaster, the person who helped us market those manuals would have said, "Let's patent that snow blower, let's see if there are any, there's any intellectual property, let's talk, get the price of a patent attorney, let's see if we can sell that to someone." We were going right around the organization and looking for intellectual property, whether it be micro-publishing of work that teachers were doing, individual writing, we productized a game that was used in driver's ed, made $100,000 off that, so, you know, we just, so we were making pretty major dollars off these kind of things, so, you know, I have, but what you've got to do is have someone that goes around the organization and finds it, you have to say, "Wow, go out and check this person out, they're doing something great, is there any way we can help them promote that for their own benefit, as well as possibly some financial benefit?" We were paying royalty income to a lot of staff over there, so, you know, where this might go is hard to say, right now, I'm focusing on the labor improvements, but, you know, it could go well beyond that.
Well, yeah, when I, I worked for a large California-based company that used to do the same thing, they would pay workers, if you could come over the way to save money in the production process for them, they'll pay you, they'll give you money, and I remember a specific incident where an employee saved a million dollars in the production process by moving equipment around in a different order process, and, yeah, they gave him, like, I think it was $100,000 for an employee who makes 50 a year standing at a machine, so, yeah, the employees are going to be a great resource for us in this kind of innovation, so that's nice, and I don't think it's, is it a big deal if we reward them for coming up with ways to save us money?
I don't think so.
So, does, anybody want to have any other comments to this issue, have any investment for the productivity fund?
I have a question.
Can I speak? Wait a minute, gee, Miss Lunder went first, go ahead.
Sorry. I guess my first question is, do you have a paper printout of this, so that I can review it a little bit?
Sure, we can send you both of these PowerPoints here, and we have some other write-ups that were handed out the night that we reviewed these things, that could go out with a little more detail.
And so, you're asking us to approve all three of those concepts, and my other question is, the funding for that is how much?
Okay, the funding for this would come out of one of the reserve funds we have, the general fund balance at this point. The discussion was, many organizations have revolving funds that are used to stimulate this kind of work, while we're not advocating a separate fund, we're advocating accounting for all projects that go through this to try to see if we are recapturing money, and how much we're recapturing in a revolving way.
Okay, so, but what would be our initial outlay?
Well, as you see here, I think we're talking low hundreds of thousands, not, we're not talking millions, but who knows, you know, what we may come up with.
But just so it's clear, this is just a conceptual discussion this evening about the whole thing. Bob had outlined a process that indicated we'd go to some committees, we did have an initial committee that had some representation from board, and also from community and administration, but then would go to finance, and finance would review it very carefully, you know, each of the individual ones, so, each of these three tonight would go to finance, and then from finance to the full board. So these were given as examples, there's interest in, you know, these particular ones as a way to get it started, but it really should go to the committee, and then from the committee to the full board, so this is more of a conceptual discussion.
Initially, I thought it was $6,500, I'm like, yay, but...
Yeah, well, it was from one of those initiatives, I think one of them was, yeah.
I mean, two of them were 12.5, right, for...
Correct, yeah, the Six Sigma was, you know, depending on how many people we would have at $1,200 apiece, the software's about 6,500, the grant thing is going to be tens of thousands if it would go over the course of a year.
Yeah, that's variable, yeah.
But, you know, the, hopefully by, you know, after six months or a year, we'd start to see the results, if not, we could say we're not going further with that project.
Yeah, so the initial money could be $50,000, and that is based on how much time the grant writer, how successful the grant writers.
Right, we structured the grant writer at just an hourly fee, so that we could monitor what's coming in, because as was mentioned earlier by Vince, mentioned by Bob, they don't just hand you money and then go away and never ask for anything else, there's a lot involved with it, and we're dealing with a lot of things, and I just want to make sure the kinds of things coming forward are things that are going to help us, and we have the staffing and time to be able to pull off. There might be some very worthwhile projects, but now is not the time, we just can't do it right now, we'll pass on those, and if we get nothing but those, we would say, "Thank you very much, but you're not really useful to us," and we're going to end the relationship. Conversely, if things are brought forward, that we say, "That is just what we needed, we were planning to do it anyway, you found us a way to help pay for it, and, you know, it's not that complicated in terms of the reporting requirements, let's all, you know, have hands in on this, and let's do it," you know, that would be wonderful. So, where will it fall, we'll see, but I want to do it more, take it careful, measured steps, monitor it very, very closely, and determine if it was really helping us.
Just so we're clear, I mean, I'm all for saving money and coming up with great ideas, I just needed a little bit more detail.
Thank you.
Regarding the grant writers, I just have a question, I was always told by people in other public entities, that when you hire grant writers to go after private money, they're usually unsuccessful because the private, I mean, not, how could I say, in other words, they get some money, but they're not really successful because the mentality is that they're already getting tax dollars. Am I, you know, have you seen, I guess my question is, have you seen success with grant writers in the private sector, and I guess I'm concerned about getting a grant writer, and he basically does what we're already doing, and then we, you know what I mean? In other words, like...
Let me give you my very specific example, because, you know, I guess it was going back to about '97, '98, I was making the same proposal in Lancaster, and we started out slowly, hired a person right out of English major out of college, within a year, we brought on a person with a master's degree in education who'd done some grant writing in Philadelphia. By the time we had several years of experience under our belt, and really a machine going, we had four or five people tied in with the public relations office, and we brought in 100 competitive grants, $30 million in two and a half years, 50 to 1 benefit-cost ratio. I'm not promising that by any stretch, because I think we, you know, the planets were aligned.
So it can't be done, absolutely.
Now, it's very tough, what you learn from grant writing is, people will not fund your general operating expenses, so it's very difficult to balance a budget with this, but as you saw from some of those opportunities, they can be things that bring a specific project, might be helpful in another area where we're having financial or operating difficulties, occasionally you get the really big grant, and maybe Diane would like to talk about this, because the urban districts, and I'm talking Lancaster and Diane's experience as Allentown, they've had to do this, it brings every issue imaginable, but, you know, you have to be heads up as you go through it, Diane?
Yeah, and I would just reinforce what Bob said, we had about $30 to $40 million of grant money in my last district. Now, you know, as Bob said, you can't promise that, because the demographics are different, and there are some grants that really are keyed towards high-poverty districts, usually looking at 40% or more poverty, but, you know, as Bob mentioned, it's, part of it is really finding the right opportunity that matches something that you were planning to do anyway. The KTO grant was a perfect match for things that we were planning to do anyway, but really didn't feel we could come to you guys all at once and say, "Hey, we need all this money to implement this stuff right now." So there was a very good match between the direction we were headed and the requirements of the grant. The other piece I would mention is, you mentioned private grants and private organizations, sometimes I've found too, those can be very good opportunities to partner with your 501(c)(3) organizations in the community, because sometimes they're looking for those 501(c)(3)'s, your nonprofits, to be the lead partner, but they can partner with the school district. Linda Abramant United Way and I had been discussing one that we ultimately decided was just too huge to take on right now, it would have been perfect for preschool education. It would have been perfect for preschool education. United Way could have been the lead partner and then work with us in Sodderton, kind of pass-through for the money to provide the resources for the community. So those kinds of opportunities are out there and are available. Some of it takes coordinating with your other community organizations to come up with a robust program, rather than just saying, "We're going to try to do this all myself." In part, again, because some of these organizations have a lot of success with grant writing, and so funders look at that and say, "They've had success with getting grants in this area before. They've had success in implementing grants. So if the two of you are partnering, I'm more willing to believe that you've got a good proposal and you're going to implement it well."
All right. Thank you.
So to summarize, I think the grant-writing proposal has potential. We would take careful and measured steps. We'd have a lot of reporting back to the school board, and of course, administration monitor very, very carefully and closely, and determine if it's yielding projects that we think are things we want to pursue, or if it's not. And if it's not, we'll say, "Thank you very much, it's just not working for us. We wouldn't have that much into it at that point in time." If it's yielding results, we're just pleased that it is, and we see the potential, and then we, you know, push forward to try to secure the grants. The first step is I need to see more detail on the specific grants that would be proposed and see if they fit, and if she want to meet with us to see, you know, what kinds of things we are interested in, because she doesn't need to waste her time to bring us something that we would simply turn down. But I think it has potential, and I like the idea of doing it on an hourly basis with no expectations, you know, specific to a certain dollar, full-dollar amount. But we'd give it a fair shot. We'd work with her and be fair, you know, and see what it would yield. The Lean Six Sigma, we'd want to talk some more with the finance committee about it. I think that process management is something that has yielded tremendous results for organizations. It's not as common in school districts, and we may be a bit on the cutting edge with that, but we have something we can learn from them. And then the benchmarking idea, I'm all about gathering data to find where are we, you know, best in class, and where are we not there yet, but we can learn from other places. But it helps so much to have information to make an informed decision. I cannot sit here tonight and say, "We are best in class in everything we do." There -- I get to meet any organization that is very best in class in every aspect of their organization, but the data helps to show where you could learn from others, and that benchmarking idea, I think, would be productive. So that's what we are.
There is some benchmarking with Six Sigma, so I don't know if it's going to be a complementary application.
We'll have the presentation. There's a little more in the process management. They do training with that. It's not as much in the data gather.
But to understand the process, to do benchmark and understand how efficient...
You have to benchmark to, yeah.
To understand where you are and how you improve your efficiencies. So I think the two may be complementary, or they may be redundant. I'm not...
I don't think the trainer does the benchmarking, though. He trains you on the importance of benchmarking and how to do benchmark, but he won't come and say, "You know what? North Penn School District, I've looked at this for you as a part of my fee, and these are the areas where..."
Yeah, so he may train how to gather the information to benchmark, and that's why I'm trying to say, that they may be complementary instruments, or they may be actually the same thing. I don't know.
Point won't take.
Any other comments? So, positive idea?
Then consensus from the board to pursue it. We'll bring specifics to finance, from finance back to the full board.
Motion to adjourn, guys.